Call to order, the Gurnee Village Board Committee of the whole, April 29, 2024. You doing roll call?
I can do roll call since the clerk's not here. O'Brien.
Present.
Thorsonson.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Garner.
Here.
Ballmas.
Woodside.
Here.
Five present, one absent.
All stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States.
Wanna?
Sure, so myself, Brian Gosnell, Chief Cavell, Chief Smith are gonna handle this. So we've presented updates to the board in the past and we've taken action at the village's board level. As of here tonight, getting to a point that the IGA bylaws are getting almost in final draft format. The timeline going forward right now, partners should be presenting this information to their governing boards with the hopes of having those agreements before each of the boards for formal consideration in the next couple of months. So we're gonna listen to the next steps. And then also note that we have Lake County Chair Sandy Hart joining us tonight and then the executive agent that's been the point going here. Again, I talked about what we're gonna take a look at tonight. Let's go to the next slide.
I had you slotted for the first two minutes. That was fast. Alright, so everyone's seen this slide before. We started with this a couple of years ago. There's currently 12 PSAPs answering, dispatch answering points within the county. You look at the borders here, this was all built years ago around wired phone lines. Everyone's wired phone line goes directly to these. The system worked back in the day because you called on a landline, it went to the proper dispatch center and we were able to respond. Well, since then, most people have gotten rid of their landlines and we use wireless now. Mobile phones don't, do not work the same way. They go to the closest tower. The tower then tries to figure out which center to send it to. In a way our towns are, you can see all the niches and things there, you don't know who's gonna answer your 911 call. And that means there's immediately a call transfer in 911. When someone, you know, seconds count, someone's life's on the line, that's unacceptable in this day and age with technology for us to have call transfers. We started this, you know, years ago on this exact discussion, getting ready to call transfers. And that's still where we're at today. We've come a long way and we'll go through that tonight in there, but this slide's very important. Can you flip to the next slide? This next slide, so that first one was where your answering points were. The one to the left is your fire and EMS agencies. The one to your right are your police agencies. You'll notice again, none of the borders line up with each other and none of those borders line up with the PSAP borders. So when you're dialing a wireless phone call, or even in this case, a landline, you may not go into the initial dispatch center you need. Gurnee Fire, we also cover Park City. We cover, you know, almost, over a third of our calls are in the county or in the fire district. So that call gets answered by a police first agency. So currently if it's in Park City, that phone call gets answered in Fox Lake. If it's a Lake County call, it gets answered in Lake County. And Lake County is a police agency. Therefore, they don't have immediate EMD. They don't start a medical dispatching. They get your information, they get your address, they get your point of contact, they go, oh, we know where we're transferring this to. They then transfer it to Gurnee, who then is the first person, maybe a couple minutes in, that's starting to work with the person on first aid, CPR, all the lifesaving instructions that are in place. Park City, as I said, that goes to Foxcom. That even gets more confusing because when you have Foxcom, they're not as familiar. County at least transfers to everyone. They have a general idea what the transfer is. Foxcom, it's fairly new for them to know the borders between Waukegan and Gurnee around them. They're doing their best to transfer that phone call back to the proper person, get the proper response. On 101 meetings, when we talked about this earlier, you know, I gave some personal stories of where this directly affected some of the calls we were on. I shared the one time about the water incident we had out in Drew's Lake and that phone call being transferred four different times. We shared the outcome was not good and it really, that's not the atmosphere we can work in. So, anything to add on the lines? Okay, next slide, background. Gurnee's been there since the beginning. We've been attending meetings. The 2013 meeting happened in the old Holiday Inn. Many of us in, well, a few of us in the room were in that, in that, there, we were there for the first consolidation talks. This was the previous county administration, there's Kevin was there with me. It was initiative, we all saw it. The problem is, it was the first time we dipped our foot in the water. It really quickly started getting, you know, contentious on who would run the center. You know, well, maybe we should just go to the biggest person and they'd be the dispatch center. It went back and forth. That one kinda fell apart. Well, back in 2017, the ETSB of Lake County did a study about consolidation. Just so happens around that same time, we as Gurnee did a study. That's back when the state put new legislation in place that said, if you're under 25,000 residents, you need to join another PSAP. You can't have your own ETSB board and you need to do that. This was the opportunity for us to put a study together, look at it, and this is when Zion joined and Beach Park Fire joined with us. We, you know, Newport's been here pre-1993, that's as far as I go back, they were already partners of ours back at that point. But we joined those other two agencies. Some of the things we picked up in the study was the importance of consolidation, was the call transfers. The other thing that we learned, a larger center really has the ability to handle larger incidents multiple at a time. Just a quick refresher, currently we use something called vertical dispatching. A dispatcher, a phone operator answers the phone, they, they start processing it, they're the same person that says, hold on for a second, they then push a button and they set out a tone and they let the fire units know. Same thing with the police side. They're, while they're on the 911 call, the same person could be working with you. Now, back when we worked with Zion and we did our study, that was our opportunity, the first time ever to start trying to go to horizontal dispatching. And we've been working at staffing models, I should say, Chief Smith and his team have been working, trying to get our staffing up so we could do that. Horizontal dispatching allows there to be a call taker. Someone answers the phone, they're talking to the person, there's a fire dispatcher in the room, there's a police dispatcher in the room. They dispatch the call so there's no interruptions, 911 instructions, it's all happening through computer terminals, there's no delay in letting the fire department know and the police department so we can get the call out. When our staffing numbers are up, that's opportunity there. Now, LakeCom being a much larger group, all the studies showed, and it's out there, it would be able to use a horizontal model. It'd be more effective. I think I'm actually on the next slide priority, Brian. That's why I only use one slide when I do PowerPoints normally. The, so as we're going through the different benefits here, we talked about call transfers already. The opportunity for all the current dispatchers that are employed throughout the county to come into a new professional center and be supported in a single center and be able to work together in a professional environment that is not, we were discussing this just before the meeting, some of these dispatch centers that are out there are literally on a public works floor that have been built out of room. There's other ones, when we took over Zion, it was in a basement and I use the word closet. Dispatching, and I don't meant this to be wrong, is always was an afterthought when we built our buildings. We did a nice job when we built our building in the 90s, dispatch was there, we have it up front where it belongs, it's got a nice room, it's a decent size, it's grown to a level it could when we took on Zion, we really don't have more room for expansion, we've discussed that over the years, but it's a professional center. This center here will allow them not only to be in a professional setting, it'll give them locker rooms, it'll give them somewhere to eat, it gives them training rooms within our building, professional, all the things that they need to treat the profession like it is. That's why this is such an important initiative and something that came out of the study, that it needs to be treated its own profession. There are other opportunities that did show that there was possible for operational savings. Also showed that if we buy one system and we share it, the capital investments there, we'll talk about later how we've had some successes already as a group on that. And the biggest thing, it eliminates all the duplication. All of us doing it our own way, paying for it individually, it allows the opportunity there. This is you, Pat.
Sure, so I mean, the point of this slide is Chief Kavanaugh said, I mean, the discussions have been taking place back as far as 2013 and forward, but from the Village of Gurnee's perspective, again, have been participating in this effort for the last six years. So first action we took back in 2018, and I won't read through each one of those, but the point is just that for the past six years, the village has been heavily involved in this. Lot of staff time spent, which is good, again, building an entity from the ground up, you wanna be there, have a say, make your voice heard. And again, it doesn't seem like it's been six years at this point, but again, have made these strides along the way and have seen benefits from it already. Just the CAD going live, you know, last week, getting on the same software system, all that, has already benefited the Village of Gurnee. So again, this is just continuing down that path. And then just a reminder, the most recent action we took towards the end of last year, the communications stay agreement, retention incentive with our dispatch operators, looking to keep them around, hopefully motivate them to transition to the new center when we move in that direction. So that first payment was made towards the end of last year. The next payment will be made, it was six months after the IGA is approved, and then the final payment with that group is when they transition to the new entity. So again, point of this is just, last six years, the Village of Gurnee has been front and center in this effort to move this forward.
Alright, I, good evening, I'm perfectly fine allowing Chief Kavanaugh to take the primary role here. He, he's well versed in this and very passionate about it. I do wanna touch on, Chief Kavanaugh mentioned the 2017 study. And, and, and part of the, the question that was addressed there and asked was, was consolidation feasible? And, and that information was received in 2019 and it came back as yes. Consolidation, countywide consolidation is feasible to solve the problem that Chief Kavanaugh has talked about with, for one thing, call transfers. And so, in this first IGA, if you will, 2018 to 2022, we had nine PSAPs that came together and began to have the conversation of what would the core requirements be? What was the goal of solving the problems that Chief Kavanaugh talked about? And there, there, you've seen this before, I believe, but, you know, really the right of public, the right public safety resources to the right location with the right information in the shortest amount of time. And, and so that, that has, we're continuing to operate under that IGA, that work is still being done. And, and, next slide, Brian? And Chief Kavanaugh is gonna touch on this quite a bit, but again, implementing that IGA and continuing to work on that, this really kinda was the pathway to the creation of this new entity, if you will. The Lake County public entity that will become a full partner and receive services from a new consolidated PSAP, LakeCom is what you guys have heard. And, and we've gone through the process of beginning to implement that, the work has been done. I'll turn it over to Chief Kavanaugh, but you'll see there that the goal is to bring forth an IGA in front of you at the conclusion of this first IGA sometime in the next month and a half to two.
Yeah, as Chief Smith said, that first IGA that we spoke of that we joined as the nine PSAPs, we came together and we had a mission to write the IGA that will create LakeCom. But we had to have some core foundation in place to be able to build that off of. And that's really what this slide, the overview of this slide here is, we came together and we wanted to create a baseline of service. We wanted to make sure we create a pathway for partners, not customers, partners, people that are in this together, we're all partners, we all have decision making. It really was important, and we've discussed this with you, that it's a governmental agency. One of the main reasons there is our current employees. We've always said this, that our employees through this process need to be taken care of and they need to have a pathway to the same thing at the new center. A good place to work with benefits, continuing their pensions, continuing falling into a seniority system amongst all of the other dispatchers in the county that works together. It's one of the most important things that we said, the employees that we work with, the ones, Chief Smith every day goes in, visits and says hello to in his building. We have to be able to look them in the face at the end of this and know we created a professional thing and that was for all dispatchers around the county. We had to create a transition pathway to get from center one to center two. We also, as a group, know we need to be on the same technology. We took a huge leap forward in this a couple of weeks ago. Out of that 2018, 2022 group, when they came together, it was probably one of the biggest accomplishments besides setting up this, I think the future IGA that we're working under now, was we jointly figured out how to buy a new CAD system together, new police RMS and then jail software for the county as well. And we all came over to this just a couple of weeks ago in CAD. It's allowed us now to share information via computer back and forth with each other. It's the first step of consolidation. The other big thing it did, it started training all of our dispatchers around the county on the same system. It's allowing them to work within our own center, we're still taking calls our way, we're still using the radio our way, Lake Zurich's doing it their way, but it's allowing them to learn the technology of the software. As we continue to work towards this, we continue to look for improvements to bring ourselves into like ways. A couple of months ago, or about a month ago, you voted for us to switch our fire alarm system to the one all our other partners. That's important, one, to get us to the same system, the other one, so our dispatchers, day one, when they walk into the new center, are able to function under that system. And that's what we wanted to make sure was in place for all the partners, a transition plan that works for all of us. And that's really what the first IGA set up in place for us to build out to the second IGA. So that was our mission. Then, oh, I think you jumped on me, there you go, okay. So what, what did we create? We, we looked at it and there's two things we'll talk about once, I'm gonna stick to the left side, the LakeCom. Once the nine partners came together, which did end up becoming seven of us at this point, the majority of you know, at this point, the Lake County Sheriff has chosen not to come in and then Waukegan has chosen not to come in. And we can talk a little bit more about that as we go forward. But as we created this, the Lake County Board has stepped up and held the chair for the Lake County Sheriff. They're keeping that position alive, that way all the phone calls in Lake County still can be answered in this new center, which does a huge thing, it gets rid of the majority of the call transfers. And it allows us to get police, fire and EMD going immediately, which is big. So, part of this is the things that we've been creating as a group and we've done as PSAPs and we do it in open meetings, we've started creating an implementation IGA. We've gone through, we've created the bylaws. We also, you'll see in a future slide, started creating organizational charts and staffing estimates. This allowed us then to bring, and Brian's gonna go thoroughly through this later, it was able to bring all the finance directors on to start building cost estimates. Because the hard part is, it was very easy to say, hey, get us a center, create it, how much is it gonna cost us? Well, without us first creating a skeleton model and outlining and putting in all this together, we couldn't do cost estimates because we're looking at a partnership, we're looking for members to join us, all to be together, it'll be a joint model. And that's, it's a little unique. It's a lot easier just to say, hey, this is how much you pay us, we'll hire a couple more people. This is recreating a wheel and creating a brand new organization. So it took a long time. The other thing that we've talked about is transition funding. I know we put some money in budget, Pat covered that, in the ETSB budget, that we put some money that, you know, we would put up front to help transition this. Some of the other towns have also done similar, started putting money in their budget this year. That way, the first year until this can operate, we're going into millions in the bank to get the ball rolling. We would look at this as a long-term loan program, very, you know, probably a three to five year till we start getting paid back, but it would give us the opportunity to help fund this to get the ball, the rolling here. And then we had to create a transition plan. Ultimately, somehow as we open the center, we have to get the people in this building start transferring over one at a time. So we looked at that. So that is the dispatching side. On that same slide back there, the right side is all about ETSBs. One of the unique things about Illinois, we have to have, as we know, we have, you know, political, more political government organizations in other states, well, here's another one. We created something called ETSBs to oversee the money of the 911 funds that come in. Well, there, you'll notice there's, on the left-hand side, there's seven partners plus the county, eight. You look on the right side and there's only six of us because they don't line up exactly the same, how the ETSBs. However, the ETSBs collect money from wireless, or all the phone companies, wireless and wired, to help pay for dispatch services, call answering, 911, PSAP services. So part of this, to be able to afford this, and Brian will go through the cost modeling of this, we have to also create IGAs and bylaws because we still have to keep an ETSB on board, but back to that legislation that was passed when we started the consolidation, you're allowed one ETSB per one PSAP. That's what the state says. You can't have your five ETSBs while running one PSAP. It has to be one for one. The dollars have to directly go to support the dispatching and 911 call answering. So that's why it's important. At the same time, we're working on IGAs that would establish a brand new joint ETSB board. So, we're moving on. We talked about the seven partner dispatch centers, but they actually serve 15 fire and EMS agencies and 22 law enforcement agencies. Pretty diverse group here, which has kinda made this even a bigger challenge. Some of them are used to just being customers, you know, and they probably kinda like just paying a fixed rate and going there. But part of this, as we're joining together and bringing all these groups together, one of the things we've worked as PSAPs is trying to make sure everyone has a voice at the table and everyone has buy-in to this to make it successful. So it's a big one there. Anything to add on that one? Nope. Operational concept. So our, our big thing here was, and it, I've kinda said this before and I'll just touch on this real quick here, we wanted to create an IGA that allows all public entities, villages, fire protection districts, the county of Lake, all to be able to join into the center. Have a way for us all to become and be members in a shared governance. The same time, with the sheriff stepping away, we also wanted to make sure there's an easy on-ramp to get the sheriff back in. These call transfers really go away when the sheriff's in, in the center with us. And that still has to be one of our priorities to continue to work towards and make this center successful, so hopefully someday we can get that to happen and play out. The, let's jump to the next slide, the last bullet point throws me a little bit because it ties better in here. Lake County operational concept. So I kept talking about a membership board. So the moment you join LakeCom, you, you approve the IGA that will present to you sometime in June, that allows each municipality, each fire district to have a voting member that sits at the membership board level. This is the true oversight of LakeCom. This would be people that would be approving the budget, coming together, if there's, if there's significant changes to the IGA, you would need a large percentage of vote, but these are the people that will oversee the dollars and make sure. But it's unrealistic to, it's not realistic to see them meeting all the time, so we went ahead and created an executive committee that would meet more on a monthly basis and represent not only Lake County, LakeCom board, but it would also represent all the other people that the PSAP is providing service to. And that's what the executive committee there. Lot of time was spent on this, making sure that we had representation from all the different groups and trying to make sure. You'll see the chair and the vice chair of the member board of directors would also sit on the executive committee. So the same people that would be up there presenting to the larger board, the budgets and being able there, would also know the day-to-day operations. We felt that was very important for continuity of explaining back and forth between two boards. We also wanted to make sure we had a city administrator sitting on the board. Someone from Lake County, whether that be the sheriff down the line or right now an appointment in the Lake County, to have them there and make sure they have representative. A fire protection district trustee, very unique, separate taxing group that we, we don't necessarily have, but they need a representative room. And then it was important, we felt, for police and fire chief to have a representative room in case as the executive director has operational questions and/or just to be an oversight to make sure the public safety is not ever being overlooked when we're making our decisions. The group knows and its first challenge is to hire an executive director. We actually have started working more towards hiring a, looking very soon with the transition dollars, to hire a transition manager because we do not, we feel like the quicker we can get this person on board to start building this transition, building the plan to get the team together is important. We don't, we know we're gonna have to do a national search to find someone to run a center of this size. We know we don't have time for that. So one of the hopes we are is to hire someone very soon, as soon as the IGA starts getting passed, that can start working on the true transition plan. We've laid a skeleton out, but once again, we didn't wanna tell all the partners how this would be solved, we have to do this together because it's all of us together. And for the eight of us to come, or seven of us to come in there and make that decision for them, didn't seem right. So we've tried to leave it a little vague, even though that's led to other questions from all the partners, because sometimes they're like, well, you don't have the answers for us. It's kinda like, do you build it and they come or do you wait and build it together? We're trying to wait and build it together as much as we can. And then, we need all the auxiliary parts that are there. We, you know, we've talked about making sure, and Brian in the budget team have needed all these, making sure technology, HR, finance, legal, all these things are funded and budgeted for, because as you're staying up separate entity, we need to make sure all these things are in place. The other big one there, probably the biggest box to Chief Smith and I, is the advisory committee box. One of the things that's in there, there will be a law enforcement, municipal law enforcement committee, operations committee, and then there will be a fire EMS committee. Just so happens that the fire EMS committee, we've already started meeting, and this is where things like the fire alarms come out of. All the things that we can find that we have similar in place to put this together, but this is very important from an operational standpoint, as we're transitioning and we're working together, we need to have these committees in place. The technology committee, that's pretty obvious, as we've implemented a new CAD system, why that's very important to us, and then to make sure there's always a working budget committee, because really, at the end of the day, we have to be able to answer back to our home boards, the, you know, where the dollars are, where they're at, what the plans are going forward so we can continue to plan. As, you know, this would be a spot where initially there was a fifth committee on here, we had another committee, a special committee set up just for the sheriff, because we understand they're unique to the rest of municipal government, so we made sure they had our committee so they could have a spot there. I still believe down the line, that fifth committee, hopefully will come back in there because they need to have their own voice there. As we go into that horizontal dispatching model that I talked about earlier, this is very important, we have call takers in a room, they answer the phone calls. They then can get police and fire going at the same moment to the thing. If we're all in one room together, the efficiencies are there. You know, the, the initial picture was, you would have, you know, trained fire dispatchers, you have trained police dispatchers, you have trained sheriff dispatchers, and you have call takers that are taking this. They're all able to transfer things back and forth. If there's an emergency, we can get the closest unit there to help each other. There are times where, you know, it goes back to what we started this whole thing with months ago, I'm responding to Woodland School in the district, I'm fortunate, I have our, our officers in the building, they respond with us. There's other times where a Newport fire doesn't have its local police department, only counts on the sheriff, we can't get a joint response to them to go to that school without calling down to the sheriff, finding out where it is, and then there's no common radio between our dispatcher and them. So we lose that ability to be able to have that conversation with the sheriff to get him in a room. Getting in a room, working under the same protocols as us, that's where I go back to what's important. We all need to be there, together in that room. We talked about the new joint ETSB board and the importance of that, to support the capital of this, help pay for the dollars to build the center, keep the technology up to board. If without that capital money, it's all sharing, similar to what we do with our current ETSB board that us and Zion share, we support the center and that's important. Alright, we've talked in the past, and I'll reiterate, The Rock, this is the facility that we were so fortunate in this county to have. Lake County Board stood up, went out and bonded, they found lots of unique ways to find some other dollars to help support it, but ultimately, they are paying the note on this building. This is allowing us, if you drive down Lurdiville and you go on their campus, state of art facility. This is what a 911 dispatch center should be. This is, you're talking hurricane rooms, winds, redundancies, all the things that none of our individual little centers can have. They're building us a top-of-line, quality facility there. It, it's, it's really, the planning committee, all the people that were involved in this, the county employees, to the people they hired, it's a phenomenal, top-of-the-line center. It, it really is. We should be proud of it in the county and people around the country, it will be right there at the top level like it should be. Their, their primary thing and one of the things we're pushing hard, this center will answer all primary 911 calls within. That way, the call is answered in there, we can get the local police or That way the call is answered in there, we can get the local police or fire going. If we have to figure out a way to port the call to the sheriff, at this point we'll figure that out. Hopefully we won't have to do that someday. Uh, they will provide EMS, fire and law enforcement. One of the big things there, some of the centers I talked on earlier do not do emergency medical dispatching. This center will have emergency medical dispatching. Uh, you know, as we look at common protocols, we're looking, you know, at emergency fire dispatching. I, I believe the police chiefs are starting to discuss their dispatching protocols to come to a similar one. This is creating standardization as much as it's some change, it's, we're going to professional models that are proven across the country. That are, be a little changed to all of us, but I do believe will make our responses better. Uh, we are using the current CAD system that was put in place. Uh, one of the neat things, we have that up and rolling already, we talked about that. Back to our employees, we said it was very important that it would be an I M R F, uh, so their pensions transfer over. Um, as far as backup centers, we're still looking at this point and it makes a lot of sense. There's been two identified in the county, uh, Lake Zurich and ourselves. Um, where they're at, the infrastructure we have, location wise compared to the main center, it allows us a lot of redundancies. So we do have a plan for an initial backup center. Once this center gets completely stood up and we go there. And we could possibly become someone else's backup, we can reevaluate that, but that's really why we need to hire a professional. Uh, person to run this and executive director, someone that has that foundation and can build what our center could be backup to. And then we can find someone else to back up and maybe stand those centers down, but we do have a plan in place day one to start working towards having backup centers in place. Um, and we, in the I G As, we put basic scope of services that both the police, the fire chiefs and the dispatch leaders. The leadership from the dispatch centers also have been meeting and put the basic scope of services that need to be in the center and that's included in this. And then the big one, the big question, we're switching over to Brian, the annual shares and what they're based on.
Thank you, Chief. So, uh, obviously a big question is how much is it gonna cost and how are we gonna pay for it? Uh, is what, uh, we kind of assembled the team, some finance directors represented from the county, Vernon Hills, us, Hawthorne Woods, SenCom, Brown Lake Beach SenCom. Uh, we're part of the finance tiger teams and we're called, so we, we did a lot of work on, uh, putting this stuff together. And we really took an approach, a building block, building block approach, and there's really three parts to it. The core budget, so everything without personnel included in here, so all the technology things, all the maintenance agreements, all the software, uh, all that kind of stuff. One team took that, personnel budget, there's multiple staffing models and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. But, uh, what's it gonna cost us from a staffing standpoint? Um, combined, those would be the total budget. And then finally, once we know how much it's gonna cost, how are we gonna spread that amongst the partners? Uh, so that's really the third block, that's the cost sharing model and there's a few variables in there, um, that we'll get it more, more in detail on. But one, how do we split it between police and fire? As Chief Kavanaugh mentioned, there's a bunch of different types of agencies. There's fire districts, there's municipal police and fire. Um, how do we split the total cost between fire and police or law enforcement? And then how, how do we actually charge the agencies? And then to get everything moving and get onboarded. Uh, how, how do we smooth for those, for those agencies that see a drastic increase? Uh, how do we smooth that to kind of take away that sticker shock upfront, so we can get as many partners onboard as possible? Uh, obviously the more partners, the partners, the better. So that's, that's really everybody's benefit to be able to smooth that out and get as many onboard upfront as we can. So first two blocks, the, the budget. Uh, we talked about the core budget. Uh, part of the finance tiger team tackled that, included in that professional services, debt service, we did have a, a debt service assumption in there. Uh, capital, training, maintenance, network, all that kind of stuff, uh, was included in there. We came up with a range of about three-six to four-one, like a little bit, a little bit lower than three-six, but three-six was the number for, for planning purposes that we, uh, that we settled on. Second part is that personnel budget, uh, looked at twelve support staff and then really three different models. And, and as we went through it, there's probably five or six models, but, uh, really three different models that seemed to settle in. Uh, that included a hundred and nine telecommunications, a hundred and four telecommunications and ninety-nine telecommunications. Uh, when we did this, we took information from the consultant that was hired, federal engineering, looked at a couple of other different, different, uh, joint agencies. DUCOM and Northwest Central, I think is the other one, name. Uh, looked at those and said, okay, what, what looks like it'll work for the horizontal model that Chief Kavanaugh described. Uh, that came to about fourteen million, giving us a total budget, total budget estimate of seventeen point six. As we move through that, there is some revenues that come along with consolidation. Uh, right now every P S A P. I shouldn't say every P S A P, most P S Apps, uh, do get nine-one-one surcharge money. I think it's a dollar fifty a line. Uh, comes to, comes to us to offset expenditures running the nine-one-one center. In total, once combined, it's eight and a half million dollars of surcharge amongst the partners annually. Uh, so the budget assumption is we'll use seven and a half of that to offset the expenditures, keep a million in reserve for some capital, contingency. The stuff that we don't know what we don't know yet. So have a little, have a little extra, uh, it kind of in the bank in reserve. So take the seventeen point six, apply the seven and a half, uh, surcharge revenue. Uh, there's a, a million dollars of other revenue assumption in there that is, uh, right now it's the, uh, called, called answering for the county. Uh, there's obviously a fee that comes along with that, so that's part of that revenue. Uh, brings us to a bottom line that we need to collect from the partners of nine point one million. So how, how do we share that nine point one million dollar cost amongst the partners? Uh, the first variable I talked about was how do we split that total between, um, fire and police or law enforcement? Uh, right now, when we, when we looked at, we have these huge spreadsheets with all kinds of numbers of data that we collected. Uh, but right now, the current cost split across the county is about twenty-four percent fire, seventy-six percent law enforcement. So right now, all the P S Apps, that's the, the cost differential, that's, that's where the dollars are going. Uh, DUCOM, one of the, one of the ones we looked at was twenty-two point eight percent, seventy-seven percent. So we settled on a model that would allocate twenty-five percent of that nine point one million needs to be charged back to the fire agencies. And the seventy-five percent back to the police agencies. The second variable is, okay, how do we decide who pays what? Um, for, for years, P S Apps, uh, across the county had all kinds of different models. Uh, some, you know, some had some, some methodology behind it, others were just, were just numbers. So we said, let's come up with some sort of formula, uh, that, that we can use to calculate a share for everybody. So we looked at a few different options. I should say data points, not options, data points. Uh, in, for the fire and EMS, it was calls for service. It's an easy one. They have a national reporting service, NIFRS. Uh, gets us good data, it's consistent across all the agencies, so that's a, that's a real easy one, easy one to use. Uh, on the law enforcement side or the police side of that was a little more difficult to get some calls for service data. Uh, every, every agency, every P S A P kind of measures that a little differently. Uh, so that was, that was a pretty difficult one. One of the things that DUCOM used was, uh, actual sworn officers as that data point. So for law enforcement side, we looked at sworn officers and then for both, population and E A V. So one, one being kind of what's the workload on the center for, for those agencies and the other is more of an ability to pay. Now, we wanted to make sure that the charge, the, the charge or the fee was fair and equitable across all, all the agencies. Um, including obviously workload on the center and then, and then inability to, uh, to, to be able to make that, make that payment. Last variable was how are we gonna smooth the shocks? Um, so obviously some agencies that have been getting great deals for years, uh, obviously are gonna see an increase here. We're going to one single model for all agencies rather than seven or nine different models of, of charging back costs. So there's gonna be some savers, there's gonna be, and there's gonna be some folks that, that are gonna have, that are gonna see some increases. So we put together, uh, we went through probably four or five models now, um, kind of vetted each one, see how, how it all worked out. Um, it came down to right, right now, the, the, I'd, I'd say the, after all, after all that work and going through it for what, six, seven months now. Uh, we settled on this, if you, if you have an increase of twenty-five percent or more. Uh, that increase will be spread over five years and funded by those, those agencies that are gonna, going to be saving money. Um, so obviously that's, we're in that category, so we would contribute to smoothing the costs for the first five years on a, on a deescalating, uh, smoothing. Uh, to, to keep those, those folks onboard, kind of absorb that shock, that initial increase. One thing I wanted to touch on that I kind of glossed over was how we came down to the weighting of those data points I talked about in variable two. Uh, the calls for service, population and E A V. We ran ten models, nine, nine or ten models. Um, with, using different weighting, you know, should it, should it be seventy-five percent E A V or fifty percent calls for service? So we ran like ten different models and came to the one that kind of had almost everybody's middle. Um, and so that's, that's where we ended up with thirty-nine percent, uh, calls for service, thirty-nine percent population and twenty-two percent E A V.
Can, can I jump in real quick, Brian? On the, uh, variable four, I'll even say as of today, we're still working on that one, be funded by savers. One of the models we were working on as one of the working groups today, we were actually looking at funding that through the P S A P centers, the current P S A P centers as well. So you, we aren't sure which model in the end is going to be the final model. We keep working back and forth between the two. But you may not see the savers one, you may see one or it's funded through the P S Apps. We're still working on the dollars on that. As Brian said, this six, seven months of numbers and moving and trying to get partners there. It goes back to, we're trying to get as many people in the centers possible that gets rid of the call transfers. Ultimately, back when this all started, it's about the quality of service. And we as centers know the importance of getting everyone in there and this is one of the things we're still working on. So I just wanted to point that out real quick. Sorry, Brian.
Absolutely. I'd say out of all the variables, that's the one currently that's, I'd say most in flux. Um, there's different ideas coming in all the time. Um, you know, it, it's gonna be some sort of model where the savers help out the large increases. I, I think is, is, is how it's gonna work out. Uh, the particulars are definitely, definitely still up in the air. Um, I hesitate to put, to put this slide up, but I, putting what we know now in that model. Uh, to, to, to what our, our current costs are and what it looks like for Gurnee. As John said, there's still variables and I got on the next slide what, how this could change and it probably already has changed, um, based on what's happened. But just to give you an idea of what this means to Gurnee, so our total twenty-twenty-three total cost was just over three point eight million. We collected just over a million from our customers, so our net cost is two point eight million. Our year one share right now with this current smoothing model, again, that's changed and will likely change this week. Um, our, our current year one share is one point four, then you can see, uh, through year six, year six is where we get back to just the model, there's no smoothing. So just to give you an idea, um. How could it change? It, like I said, it likely already has, there's a bunch of variables that go into that. Um, obviously if partners are added or removed, we have to spread the cost across either a, a bigger or smaller population, a population of partners. Um, a change in any baseline data, so if somebody's population is mis, misstated or E A V's misstated or we update E A V. For twenty-twenty-three instead of twenty-two and there's a, a, you know, a big change for somebody, uh, that could change it. Um, smoothing model, we talked about, that, that seems to, like I said, seems to be the most, uh, focused on right now that everybody's working on and, and will, will change. Uh, any budget savings, you know, as we get through year one and year two, that could offset people's or a partner's shares. Uh, would obviously change that and then, uh, any changes to surcharge legislation or additional surcharge that comes in. Or that million dollar reserve that we have, um, would also, could also change it. I would say, well, I think it's on here. Yeah, it's on here. So just some of the assumptions, uh, as we go through, obviously. And, and most of these are included in the budget, uh, all current partners participating, as John, as Chief Kavanaugh mentioned, all the calls are being answered. Um, consolidating into one single joint E T S B that manages those, those surcharge funds, horizontal dispatch model. Uh, staffing based on twelve hour shifts, there was, we did look at a model where it was eight hour shifts, so. I think, I don't know how much of that is still in flux, but it looks like twelve hour shifts was, is kind of the leading contender there now. Um, consolidation of talk groups, seven, using seven and a half million of the eight and a half million surcharge funds. Uh, keeping that other, other million in reserve. There was some, uh, we built into the budget some vacancy savings. In those first years, as, obviously as we ramp up, we're not gonna open up the center and all of a sudden have a hundred and four dispatchers in there. Um, so there will be some savings, uh, use that, build that into the, into the budget. Uh, obviously the functional split, we talked about twenty-five percent fire, seventy-five, the formula thirty-nine, thirty-nine, twenty-two. Uh, an I M R F employer, so that obviously folks across the county can keep their pensions. Uh, initially at least, benefits and finance support and payroll will likely run, run through Lake County. Uh, transition startup funds, uh, this is what Chief Kavanaugh mentioned earlier that we talked about during the budget. We built into the joint E T S B budget, so it's really a, a, a joint E T S B board decision, um, whether to use funds for that or use those funds for a loan. But there, there will, there will need to be some transition or startup funding and that is looking, looking to get that from the partners. Um, that it would be in, in the form of a loan, somewhere along the lines of a ten-year treasury note, you know, percentage. Um, looking at payback, you know, over ten years, probably offsetting share. A, a lot of that stuff is still up in the air. Don't, not sure how much we'll need and how fast the, the thing, you know, how fast it'll ramp up, so that's really in flux. Talking about kind of layering the loans so that you don't take it all up front. Um, so there's, there's a lot of things in that, but we did, we did build some assumptions into, into, uh, the Gurnee budget and into the Lake County budget. And then there was some, some, uh, talk amongst partner agencies about, uh, mobile data terminals, the computers in the cars and squads in the fire apparatus. Um, coming from surcharge money, some people use a surcharge money, some people don't. Um, that, that was another, another kind of hurdle that we had to get over is that everybody uses surcharge money differently. So trying to find out what actually everybody is paying today was, it's, it's near impossible. I mean, it was just, it, it's just impossible to, to measure, so, uh, we thought we got close.
So this is just kind of what's going on right now. So as I mentioned in my board notes, you know, the partners are out talking to their governing boards, providing this information. I provided everybody a link of Vernon Hills, so some of you may have watched that and got a preview from Chief Crease and Kevin Timmey down there. Um, as far as sharing this information, again, working on getting the Jet S B and Lake County established in parallel. Obviously that nine-one-one surcharge, uh, funding is key, um, that seven point five million dollars to take that off the operational cost. Just have the nine point one estimated to spread. Uh, again, the transition funding that Brian just mentioned, that's six million dollars. Getting some commitments from partners to help out with that, having that seed money to get it up and running. Uh, the transition and the telecommunications, I mean, we were on the, the front edge of that as far as getting the agreement negotiated and approved. I know others are still working through that process right now. And then the executive director or the transition manager, uh, get that position on boards. You've got that sole person to focus on this. Jim's got another job at the county, um, although it doesn't seem like it in the last, right. This is his job, right. Jim's looking to get back to his old job eventually. Right. Um, so getting that position in, in place is key. And then just, uh, a look at, uh, next slide, going forward here, some milestones going forward. So again, that transition manager, um, getting that person onboarded, the I G As signed by, uh, the agencies that are looking to participate. So again, that's in the next couple of months here, getting a transition team set up. Um, you've got contracts to be executed by Lake County for the technology installation and testing. So again, the rock, looking to have that operational by the middle of two thousand twenty-five. Uh, it's under rough right now, so if you go down to the Libertyville Lake County campus, down there you can see it back to the west of the permitting facility. So it's great guns a blazing. Uh, the Jet S B I G As, again, that's in parallel with getting Lake County set up. Uh, there's work to do with the state nine-one-one, uh, administrator. So just like, uh, Gurnee and Zion had to do when we combined and, uh, formed a joint E T S B, the consolidation plan. Uh, you have to fill out an application, there's hearings that have to be held at the state level, it's ultimately gotta be approved by the state of Illinois. So obviously been in close contact to the state nine-one-one administrator. Um, she's aware of the effort up here in Lake County, fully supports it, but there's paperwork in a timeline that goes along with that. Uh, John mentioned the member boards and the executive committees, getting those established, uh, those people nominated and into those positions. Obviously getting the staff hired, uh, building completed, um, the technology installed. And then a future Lake County personnel hired as the organization ramps up. So again, a ton of work has been done to date, but this has all been planning up to this point. Um, at some point it's gonna transition to actually getting those bodies in there, uh, the facility completed, et cetera. So it's been, um, again, a lot of work, but we're just getting going, uh, in this whole process. So I provided you the Lake County proposal a couple of weeks ago, I think it's four hundred and seventy-eight pages, so obviously a ton of information. Um, good information, that was, I just tried to hit some of the highlights tonight, um, obviously available, uh, for follow-up meetings. Um, as you think of more questions or, or issues come up, but again, wanted to get this out in front of the board. Um, as these, um, set timelines as far as the I G As, um, et cetera are coming up here quick. So with that being said, that concludes what staff had. Can open it up to questions. I don't know if there's anything we missed, Jim, that we should get out there. I don't know if there's anything we missed, Jim, that we should get out there from your perspective? Fabulous job, okay. We'll see where our likes are at compared to Vernon Hills with her video here in a couple of months, but so.
Let's see, questions to my left?
No questions, but I got something to say, I think. You know, I just want to emphasize how, what a big deal this is and how far you have come. And I, you mentioned me being at the Holiday Inn with you in 2017 and I recall being lectured about fiefdoms and communities that were wanting to maintain what they had. And I think that every community that has come into this process in some fashion is surrendering something that is traditional and something that is valuable to them and that is that personal connection with their, with their telecommunications. The degree of leadership that has gone into this to arrive where you are now, where we are now, is profound. And I, I wouldn't have bet many dollars on the likelihood, you know, to have a facility that is being built, you know, with the, you know, despite the decisions that the sheriff is making right now, there's no mistaking the fact that there's been profound leadership from the county in this that is in no way indicative of a fracture as far as, as far as commitment and leadership to be able to put together the resources and the political will to build a facility like that. That's the only way that was going to get done. There's no way that a collection of communities is going to do that. That can only come from the county level and that I wouldn't have imagined could have happened. And it's, it's truly impressive. Jim, your leadership through this, when it was your only job back in the day? I'm, you know, as, as kind of an old school former police chief who was like, let's go slow, change in things, you know, I would have argued against this perhaps at one point, but I'm completely convinced that this is absolutely the right thing to do. Not only is it more economical, as you've pointed out so well, in the, particularly in our case, but it is going to enhance public safety in profound ways. It is going to professionalize the, the career of nine-one-one telecommunications. I mean, all the points you've already made, but I just, I'm convinced that all those things are true and overcome powerfully any reluctance or any kind of arguments that might still exist against it, which I really don't think any of them really have much win in their sails any longer. So, so thank you. Thank you all. Thank you for your attention, Chief Smith in particular, to, to our dispatchers in anticipating the anxiety that this whole thing is, is going to create. I mean, there's a profound career change on the horizon, even though we're all convinced that it's good and they'll be treated well and they have the level of expertise and training to survive that transition perfectly. There's no missing the fact that that's an incredibly anxiety provoking situation to be in where you know your whole world is going to change and the security that you've enjoyed here is going to transition into something that you don't know. And you've paid deliberate attention to that and really anticipated needs and stepped into that. Both of you have, but it's in your building, so you've, I know, I've had a little bit of a closer view of how you've handled that. So I, I really do appreciate that. It's just truly impressive and I think it's, the odds against this ever coming together like this, you know, back in 2017 would have been, would have been long, long odds. So kudos to you and congratulations. This is great for the county and great for Gurnee. I'll get off my soapbox now.
No, that was awesome. Say diddle what Kevin said, yeah, right?
Kevin, thanks for speaking for all of us, but you know, just to add, add a little something to what you said, because I wholeheartedly agree with everything that you said. I mean, to tackle a project of this size, a humongous process is obviously complicated and I wanted to say that, you know, as I sit here and listen and I'm, I sit on the ETSB board, so you know, I've been going along with this thing and so I have an idea of how complicated it actually is. But to hear you after all the work that's been done and with all the work that need be done in the future, I heard you say that you consistently said, as a group, we, all partners, all of us together, everyone has voice. We have to do this together, you know, you know, fair and equitables. With, with, with just the, the transition from where we are to where we need to go and the, and the changes in technology and the financial costs and employee satisfaction and all of that stuff, I just commend you for continuing to say we, because we get it done. We is the super glue that will pull a project like this of multiple communities together. So I just commend you for the job that all of you guys are doing and everybody involved and I just hope that we can, we can stay on that page because I see something that is very special that will come from, you know, to and from this county and be a role model for others. So keep going.
To my right, any comments or questions?
Sure. I'll echo those two gentlemen and then I'll just kind of veer to the left a little bit with a question. So first of all, thank you very much for this presentation. Wow. I read the entire proposal and I know it had all the data points in it and my head was spinning and now I'm a little bit more clear. So thank you very much. I had one thing, I thought it was cool. I read in there that you had the carve out for the Lake County Sheriff just in case they want to come back, which I like. And I can also really see the benefits of having them in the same room, in the same program and same everything. The only thing I didn't see a carve out for was Waukegan. They're out, right? Is there a chance that they're going to come join us or because they have really clear lines, it's not going to matter per se that they're going to come back into this group?
There's carve out for all partners to join. No one, very clearly it's in there. It's, it's meant to be countywide. This is really not. Austin Gurnee selfishly really wish Waukegan was still at the table and they will continue to the table. I can speak for the fire side. Their fire chiefs still come to all of our operations committee meetings on this dispatch center. They're still working with us. They joined the new CAD system with the rest of the county, so they're on there. My dream is that they're in as well. They see this work and they're able to come join because it gets rid of a transfer. We have a border where we share cell towers. We could use them as backup. They could use us as backup. We didn't even get into the officer safety that we talked about the first time around, having that dedicated person listening and knowing who the closest unit on this shared CAD in the same center, what that does for us. So there's an onboard for everyone. The reason the sheriff's a little more unique is because their nine-one-one calls have to be answered somewhere. And this proposal is very important to look at trying to answer it all in the same center and then still trying to figure out how to transition over to them and figuring out there. They're a little more unique because they're part of that map and getting those first maps all one color. The sheriff shares with all fire districts quite a few boundaries. So it is a major partner of us. Waukegan shares a border with quite a few of us and is a major partner that we would love to have in the room. So the onboard for anyone in the county is equal. We specifically talk about the sheriff because their calls day one need to be answered and we see that as a very important thing, as the PSAP, part of our requirement in the state and part of our longer plan. So that's why they're mentioned a little different there and the county's really stepped up and kept that open, that door open as they possibly can for us.
Thanks, that's really helpful. It's also really great to know that they're onboard with the CAD system and et cetera. So it might just be an administrative thing or they might just see how wonderful it is and want to jump in and join. So that's good.
Yep, a couple of questions. So thanks. It's besides the book, having all these details, it's clear that you've articulated those challenges and those hurdles and I guess the wins and successes already. So that's fantastic. I have a few questions or comments. So one was about the backup centers. Were you initially planning also day one for the backup for McHenry and Gurnee? It sounds like yes.
Lake Zurich.
Oh, I'm sorry.
In Gurnee. Those were identified by, we hired an outside consultant being the group of nine. Those were the recommended centers due to their location, the current technology within the centers and what it would take to transition those. We've not decided how that would exactly happen because that's, we don't, the executive director, as they come in and build that plan, needs to help us with that. But that's the plan.
I'm, in my current job, always concerned about backups. So when I heard backups and that you've got a couple in mind, that's great. I also saw or heard that you're talking that you've already started, I'll say, a small step forward of the implementation of the new systems. So all the staff gets, that are in the jobs in our current PSAP staff, like Gurnee, they're learning that new system, which is terrific. So all of those newnesses don't come at once later on. I just, the, I used to do banking call center operations and so the geek in me is interested in seeing your call handling maps, particularly when a call comes in that's not in our center, you know, like a sheriff call or you're driving through, I was looking all at the municipalities that you're, those calls will bounce in and out of maybe their centers. So I'll be interested in seeing kind of how those are handled in the future, when you get to that level. I'm sure it's part of your training or the staff's training. The other things I have are real just small questions that I'll probably send to Pat because they're too much geeky stuff. Thank you.
Thanks Karen. Cheryl, anything?
I agree with everything that's been said. Good job. And my questions are also little, so.
Okay. So I'd say to Sandy, I just thank you representing the county board. I'd say that the county board's given us a gift that we're able to build off of. Appreciate the step you've taken in providing us with a facility that I think as Chief said, we wouldn't as a community been able to pull off a forty million dollar building, fifty million dollars. Is it a, it's expensive building, yeah. So without you guys, it wouldn't have happened and we appreciate the impact it'll have on our community. And if not for you guys taking that step forward, we wouldn't be where we're at today. So thank you for doing that.
Listen, we couldn't do it without your partnership. So that's been, and who was it, I think you were saying earlier, sir, that there's a lot of talk around we, us and the partners, we're working on things together, right, like you were saying, and that's how we see it too, right? This has been something that had been discussed, I think, since I joined the county board in early 2013 and it did take a long time to come together, but I think this partnership model has been really great and kudos to Jim because really this is, it is an enormous project and that's why Jim is on it full-time because he knows all of it from, almost from the very beginning. So I think having him on this project has been really valuable. So thank you very much for your partnership. We couldn't do it without you guys.
Thank you. Just one other comment would be is that you guys heard their presentation tonight and just between Pat, Brian, John, Brian, they're second to none in terms of protecting Gurnee, number one, making sure the best comes our way and that means being at the table at the very beginning and knowing what you're doing. And the little I've seen, it's just I'm so thankful that that's where we're at because we're not just waiting to see what's going to hit us at the end of the day. We're part of the team that forms, we're part of the team that includes, but at the same time, we're making sure that Gurnee doesn't get hurt in the process and I just so appreciate that. I don't lose sleep over this at night. This is something that I know you guys have handled, so thank you for what you guys have done.
So I would just say to wrap up, ask questions pop up, either send me an email or we can set up a meeting with staff to go over anything else you want to, more in depth. And again, kudos to Jim. So we sit around and we say, man, we're glad we're not Jim trying to get all this stuff together. So hang in there, Jim. Keep up the good work. So all righty, with that being said, we will transition to refuse and recycling. So Austin's going to walk us through, give us some updates and just again, background summary on the LRS waste recycling transition that we got upcoming here at the end of May.
Okay, so tonight I'll be providing an update on the village's transition to LRS, Lake Shore Recycling Systems. Project has been kicking off. Just to provide some background and the current status, you know, as our contract with Waste Management expires on May 31st, the village issued a request for proposals back in November for the residential franchise waste hauling agreement. LRS was selected at the January 22nd Village Board meeting as they provided the lowest rates and comparable services. Lake Shore Recycling Systems will become the village's residential refuse, recycling and landscape waste hauler effective June 1st, although the first collection day is Monday, June 3rd. The village and LRS have been working on communicating this change by working coordination and executing a strategic communications plan. Information and updates are continually posted on our website as well as on LRS's website. So the communications plan that's been put out is, you know, it's pretty in-depth, it's pretty detailed. As you can see, you know, LRS as well as Gurnee has been getting out in front of the residents and trying to provide as much information as we can in a very timely manner. A lot of the different communication pieces have been strategically staggered and have been put into print in the form of mailings, newsletters, out on social media, on all our different social media websites, through the e-news and through the website as well as our automated text and calling system. Currently, as you see today, is when residents are expected to receive the brochure that shows the services offered. Next up will be the summer newsletter and there will be important details in that regarding the actual transition, the timeline and frequently asked questions regarding it. So just some important details for residents to know as this happens, this just applies to the Gurnee corporate limits and those who do not pay an HOA for services. Each residence will receive one LRS garbage cart and a recycling cart. Residents who have a yard waste subscription will also receive an LRS yard waste cart. Expected delivery of the LRS carts will be between May 20th and May 27th. LRS will empty garbage and recycling carts once a week on the designated service day. As for route, specific routes and service days, minimal changes were made, just optimized pickup. So I believe it was about twelve percent of residents' service days have changed and people should take a look at their mailing to see which is their exact day for service as well as on the Village of Gurnee website, we have an interactive map where you could just go on and select your, type in your address and then see exactly your service day. We had put out a communication campaign and will be reiterating it further that new LRS yard waste stickers will be required after June 1st because they won't accept the waste management stickers. So at that point, residents have to cease using the waste management stickers and use the LRS stickers. The first bill for the period covering June, July and August services will arrive in mid-May. Billing is done in advance and on a quarterly basis. For the final week of collection, Waste Management will only empty the waste management carts and during that timeline, it's important for people not to use the LRS carts as well as on that final week of collection, to not have any garbage in their waste management carts because right after they're serviced, the contractor will roll through there and pick up the cart and if they can't, if there's garbage in it, they won't pick it up. So it will cause some service issues and operational headaches. So just some frequently asked questions. I put about the top six on here so far that the village keeps getting is why is the village changing my garbage and recycling hauler? And as to reiterate, I just, we have communicated in various ways that Waste Management contract expires on the 34th, 31st and therefore we issued an RFP and yielded three proposals and the village board selected the lowest cost as well as the one with the most comparable services. Will my garbage and service day remain the same? Very minimal route service day changes were made to optimize pickup as I had stated before. So we keep reiterating that point as well as telling people to keep an eye out for if their service day did change, they'll see that in the mailings as well as on the website through the interactive map. How will the landscape waste collection, subscription and sticker program work throughout the transition? Residents who have yard waste stickers, like I said before, will have to cease using them by May 31st and use the new LRS stickers after that point. The subscription service for yard waste was prorated by Waste Management and will also be prorated by LRS. LRS has a list of accounts. We have the and will also be prorated by LRS. LRS has a list of the accounts. We have the subscription waste, so that will just get transferred over into their system. And then, as well as during this cart enrollment period that we're currently in, residents could sign up for that yard waste program. What if my cart does not get delivered? I received the wrong size or want a different cart after delivery takes place? This will be communicated strongly more, but it's really, you know, after the carts get delivered, or they get a different one, or they just want an extra cart, they can call LRS, and there's a phone number and email. We will be providing them. I have a few people ask whether I'm out of town during the cart delivery period. We just suggest that they get in contact with their neighbor, relative, or friend, just to pull the carts up until their property or the residence. What type of waste and recycling will the new hauler collect? Basically, they're going to take everything that was included in the former Waste Management contract with the additional of white goods as being refrigerators, dryers, washing machines, freezers. They'll take that for an additional service charge. And that's it at this point for what they're going to, what they will take in addition to the Waste Management contract. But in the future, there's going to be this orange, it's a recycling bag that'd be part of the recycling pickup in town. And we'll have more information for that once the final operational plans and SWALCO and LRS release it for us. So the transition timeline is on Monday, May 20th through Monday, May 27th is the first part of it. The new LRS carts will be delivered during that time. Residents should be ready to accept the new carts in store until the first week of pickup, beginning on Monday, June 3rd. The contractor is anticipating to be delivering carts through Memorial Day. Then, beginning Tuesday, May 28th through June 1st, it's, will be the last Waste Management service for the village, as well as cart removal. So beginning Tuesday, May 28th, residents should leave their Waste Management carts empty and at the curb. The contractor will pick up their Waste Management carts after that time. And failure to have the carts empty may result in service issues. It's just a very important point to get these carts removed in a good amount of time. Monday, June 3rd through Thursday, June 6th, is the first week of LRS service. We don't have any Friday service days in town, so all be happening that Monday through Thursday. Residents should be utilizing the Lake Shore Recycling System carts and have them at the curb during that time. I just want to add one more note to this before I take any questions or concerns. It's just really important that the residents understand during this time to be patient, just because this will be a significant transition for the village, as all the households get new carts and get their old carts removed. So we just ask that everybody remain patient and cooperative, as we're going to work with Public Works, as well as the contractor and LRS, to make sure that nobody doesn't, it gets misdefered to have service. So it's really it. If you guys have any questions or concerns, feel free to ask.
I'll start to my left. Kevin, do you care to offer an oratory about something? About garbage?
It's very clear. I appreciate it being simple steps. I know what to do. Thank you. And I know how to communicate it, so.
Greg, how about you?
The dates and times for pickups, where can we point residents to?
So they, they should have got a brochure with their service day on it. However, there'll be further communication. There'll be a card hanger that will say their service day on it, as well as the service map online says their date.
Yeah, residents can go online right now to our website, and we have a map with what your service days will be. I think the main change, the 12%, were around like Fuller Road, south of Grand, and the area north of Grand a little bit, kind of in the center of town right there. That was where some flipped today. But like the eastern and western borders and north and south are pretty much the same, yeah. We're still Tuesday.
We're still Tuesday.
If that's your question.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get it right.
Cheryl's date changed, so that's a deal stopper maybe, right? Any comments?
Yeah, I have one question, and possibly it's in the online information, and I just didn't look there yet. But enrolling for auto pay, because I cover my mom's as well as ours, so I have to get on top of that.
Yeah, you can do that. There's a, there's a, there's a printout online, but you could take a look at it. It tells you exactly how to do it. You'd go to the link provided and just sign up through there.
Yeah, the brochures, Craig and I got ours today. I don't know if anyone else did, but there's information in the auto pay in the brochure. So if you didn't get it today, hopefully you'll have the brochure like tomorrow, the next day.
Thank you.
And you can read the brochures. They're big enough. Unlike the postcards that came out there, you couldn't read.
Thank you.
That's you, right?
Since I'm in HOA, I don't get any of the postcards or anything. Kind of sad. But I had an IFQ, an infrequently asked question, that I saw on the online. Plastic bags, all recycling, plastic bag's going to be allowed. I'd read that if caps or if dirty cans or stuff are there, that Lakeside will be leaving them in the recycling bin. And after two or three of that infraction happening, that the recycle bins will be taken away. Have you heard anything about that?
No, I've not heard anything about that.
Yeah. So the plastic bags will be able to be recycled once that hefty orange bag program gets into place later on the fall. So then I don't have to drive over Mariano's or Jewel anymore and stuff there's full, so that'll be nice. And then the recycling, so I've seen some stuff online too. I think it's the fourth time they check your cart. They may yank your cart. So we'll, I mean, you know, I've seen recycling carts where people put all the recyclables in a garbage bag and then throw them in there. That contaminates the whole load, and they could dump that load at the dump, and instead of taking it to the MRF. So sounds like LRS is going to be a little more strict on that than Waste Management was, so we'll work to prep residents accordingly.
It's just something I saw.
Might not have my cart.
You don't be the first one to get your cart yanked.
It's like my mom looking at my garbage. I don't know. It's like, and the cart's going to be blue, in case you're asked, right?
Yep.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you, Austin. That was very helpful.
Yeah, I would just say Township just had their contract out. They ended up with LRS too. So they're a couple of months behind us. Their pricing isn't as favorable as the village is, so I'll just stop.
We're not bragging.
I'll just stop at that.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.